Good morning and welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, nine AM Tuesday, on March eleventh, twenty twenty-five, regular scheduled board meeting. We're going to begin our meeting, as always, with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Pastor Michael Price will do the invocation and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If everyone would stand.
Let us pray. To God we come, say amen.
Thanking you for this opportunity that we have to assemble. We want to thank you for this day, in which we've never seen, this day that you've, according to some, sixty-eight and nineteen, have loaded us with benefits. So we just want to thank you for this privileged opportunity this morning. Thank you for traveling grace, that we were able to make it to this place safe, and then we pray that as we prepare now to go into our meeting, that you would lead and guide us in the way that you would have us to go, and that everything that we do and say will be pleasing in your sight. Again, we thank you and we honor you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. I'd like to call our meeting to order. We will have an executive session today on, for personnel matters, property acquisition, and litigation. We're also adding a proclamation for Women's History Month. We're going to do some proclamations and recognitions. Georgia Animal Control Association Award. If I could have Captain Hobgood come forward, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Board and Henry County citizens. Today, Henry County Animal Care and Control are being afforded the opportunity to recognize one of our very own county employees for her hard work and dedication. Her passion is not only directed at the care of Henry County's residents, but also those animals within our county. She exemplifies the very best qualities that our county offers to our citizens. On February twenty-eighth, Animal Control Officer Emily Hampton received the twenty-twenty-five Animal Control Officer of the Year Award from the Georgia Animal Control Association. She was honored during their thirty-eighth annual conference in Tybee Island. She received this award amongst her peers, representing multiple animal control agencies from all over the state. She accepted this award on her third anniversary with Henry County. ACO Emily Hampton's leadership in managing Henry County's Animal Care and Control Facebook page has significantly improved community relations and engagement. She educates animal care information to the public. She also engages the community in the daily challenges that the department faces delivering welfare to the animals in our care. Her passion for animals comes out in her work and is evident by the work she produces. Additionally, her initiative in organizing and implementing the first-ever volunteer program at our facility has set a remarkable standard for others to follow. She collaborates with her coworkers to bring these volunteers in and have them assist in the care of the animals. Her dedication to enhancing the service to the animals and the community exemplifies the qualities of a true leader. It is our great honor to recognize Animal Control Officer Emily Hampton.
So can we do the picture with the president?
Yes, ma'am.
retiring after forty-three years of service in law enforcement.
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning, members of the Board. Thank you for taking this opportunity to publicly give us an opportunity to say thank you to our chief. Chief Coppolino has served forty-three years in law enforcement, beginning his career in nineteen eighty-two. He started with the Solicitor's Office in two thousand and two, and we just really want to say thank you for his guidance, his life experience. I know he still looks awfully young, but he's given his entire life to law enforcement and a large bulk of it to the citizens of Henry County and to our office. We are incredibly grateful to have had the opportunity to get to work with him, but I'm most thankful for all of the guidance he's given.
Amber, you have a proclamation to read for us.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners and pillars of the community. It is an honor to present to the public today a proclamation recognizing Randall Coppolino, Solicitor General's Chief Investigator, upon his retirement after forty-three years of service. Whereas Chief Investigator Randall Coppolino became interested in law enforcement while working for a local newspaper as a reporter and thereafter began his career in June nineteen eighty-two with the Fayette County Sheriff's Office, dedicating forty-three years of service to law enforcement, and whereas he went on to serve as a peace officer with the Fulton County Police Department from nineteen eighty-six to nineteen eighty-nine, before returning to the Fayette County Sheriff's Office as a detective in the Criminal Investigations Division and Narcotics Division, where he specialized in narcotics enforcement and played a critical role in seizing millions of dollars in illicit assets in narcotics, as well as arresting hundreds of individuals involved in drug distribution at state and federal levels. And whereas in two thousand and two, Chief Investigator Coppolino joined the Henry County Solicitor General's Office as an investigator, quickly rising to the position of Chief Investigator, where his leadership and extensive experience in law enforcement greatly contributed to the prosecution of thousands of cases in Henry County, ensuring justice and safety for the citizens he has so faithfully served. And whereas beyond his professional achievements, Chief Investigator Coppolino is a man of many talents, including being a skilled dirt track race car driver and an avid deer hunter, demonstrating his passion and dedication in all that he does. Whereas he is a devoted family man who deeply respects and admires his wife, taking great pride in her career as an educator. He also treasures every moment spent with his children and grandchildren, valuing family above all. And whereas Chief Investigator Coppolino is a cancer fighter and survivor, demonstrating resilience and strength in both his personal and professional life, serving as an inspiration to all who know him, and whereas his wisdom, approachability, and leadership have earned him the deep respect and admiration of his colleagues, as he has mentioned and guided many in the law enforcement community, and will leave behind a lasting legacy of integrity and service. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Henry County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Chair Carlotta Harrell, Vice Chair Neet Robinson, and Commissioners Johnny Wilson, Dee Anglin III, Michael Price, and Kevin Lewis, hereby recognizes and honors Chief Investigator Randall Coppolino for his exceptional forty-three years of service, his unwavering commitment to justice, and his lasting contributions to the safety and well-being of Henry County citizens, proclaimed this March, this eleventh day of March, twenty twenty-five.
We would love to have a picture, especially with our colleague.
you.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, one more interruption. We have members of Animal Care and Control present as well. You all want to take another picture with that entire team as well. Thank you. Also in front of Chief, Chief Smith, and Major Shumay.
Mate.
And next we have, Henry County Fire Department.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Board of Commissioners and pillars of the Henry County community. We've got today the Fire Chief and Deputy Fire Chief that's going to present some annual recognition awards for years of service, and I did want to point out that I'm on the agenda because we do want to start this program starting in April for all county employees, so it won't just be the fire department that we recognize. The HR team is currently working on getting the awards ready, and we'll have them to be able to present to you in April.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to now to interim Chief Wilson.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, and pillars of the community. It is our honor to be able to be here this morning to recognize our members that have had twenty-five years or greater with Henry County, serving this great community. I want to turn it over to Deputy Chief Interim Billy Battey to call the names out. We're going to present certificates, and we'll go from there. I want to ask our whole group just to quick come up if they would.
If everyone would hold your applause till the end, please. Lieutenant Jeffrey Morrison, twenty-five years of service. Battalion Chief Thomas Harris, twenty-five years of service. Lieutenant Wanda Sue Maddox, twenty-five years of service. Lieutenant Roy Nix, twenty-five years of service. Shift Commander Michael Hicks, twenty-five years of service. Assistant Chief and Fire Marshal Michael Black, twenty-five years of service. Captain Brian Austin, twenty-five years of service. Sergeant Barry Garman, twenty-five years of service. Shift Commander Lucas Harmson, twenty-five years of service. Lieutenant Andrew Morgan, twenty-five years of service. Battalion Chief Eric Schaefer, twenty-five years of service. Battalion Chief Jeffrey Sheffield, thirty years of service. Welcome back Lieutenant Kevin Gillum, thirty years of service. Lieutenant Adam A.J. Hughes, thirty-one years of service. Thank you very much.
So, so Vic, let's do this picture here in the center. Do you want us to stay up here, or do you want us to come down front?
Stay up here.
Okay, all right.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our last proclamation is for Women's History Month.
Amber.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners and pillars of the community. It is a privilege to present to the public today a proclamation recognizing March as Women's History Month. Whereas Women's History Month was established in nineteen eighty through the shared efforts of Molly Murphy McGregor, Mary Ruth Stotter, Maria Cuarez, Paula Hammett, and Bette Morgan, the women who founded the National Women's History Project, which is known today as the National Women's History Alliance. And whereas President Jimmy Carter issued the first proclamation designating National Women's History Week from March second through eighth nineteen eighty, and Congress later expanded the observance to National Women's History Month in nineteen eighty-seven, which onward has been celebrated every March in the United States, providing an opportunity to honor past achievements, acknowledge present movements, and inspire future generations. And whereas the twenty-twenty-five theme for Women's History Month, Moving Forward Together, Women Educating and Inspiring Generations, is an empowering testament to the collective strength and influence of women who have dedicated their lives to education, mentorship, and leadership, emphasizing the impact of women on the American educational system, the free marketplace of ideas, and from grassroots movements to global initiatives. This theme celebrates the pivotal role of women from all walks of life that is intertwined with the very fabric of our community, state, and nation. And whereas the Henry County Board of Commissioners recognizes the significance of this month as a time to raise awareness on the legacies of women and unite citizens in inspiring the next generation of women, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Chair Carlotta Harrell, Vice Chair Neet Robinson, and Commissioners Johnny Wilson, Dee Anglin III, Michael Price, and Kevin Lewis, does hereby declare March twenty-twenty-five as Women's History Month in Henry County, and be it further resolved that the Henry County Board of Commissioners encourages all citizens to participate in ceremonies, programs, and activities that honor the contributions of women, appreciate their significant cultural advancements, and celebrate their collective role in shaping our society, this eleventh day of March, twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would like to ask all Henry County women. Employees, no matter what department, Tina, I see you sitting there, I want you to come up. I want to recognize this proclamation is for all the powerful and wonderful women that work for Henry County Government. We have some special guests with us today. I'd like to recognize and acknowledge that we have our Leadership Henry Class of twenty-twenty-five. They're not necessarily the best class ever. Twenty-twenty-two was the best class ever, but anyway, we like to welcome you all and thank you all for visiting with us today on Government Day, and I look forward to our discussion with you all later on this afternoon. Next item on the agenda is a presentation from Financial Services Update.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners of the Board of Commissioners and pillars of the community. This morning, I'm going to present a very brief financial update of the general fund, our service districts, SPOS, T-SPOS, and impact fees. My plan is in the middle of this to really touch on our initial budget process, where we did present how we arrived at our forecasted, as you'll see, forecasted favorability throughout the year. As you tell from these slides, the year-to-date revenues are going to be two hundred and twenty-five million dollars at this point. We've collected approximately eighty-five, eighty-six point five percent of our budgeted revenue. Year-to-date expenditures are a hundred and sixty-six million, or approximately sixty-three point eight percent of our budgeted appropriations. Year-over-year, our revenues are trending higher, which reflects the increase of the millage rate on our property values. Full year, we're expected to be at seventeen point seven million dollars favorable in revenue. Will be unfavorable in our expense categories approximately one point two million dollars. The unfavorable expense items will include contracted services and legal prisoner medical services, but they are going to be offset by salary savings in various departments. The next few slides are the financial representations of what I just discussed. This is the revenues and expenditures, and if Commissioners, if you haven't received this presentation, I do intend to forward it to you. So let's talk about property taxes, since I mentioned that that's where we have the majority of our revenues, it's also where we apply the millage rate increase. Property taxes are the main source of revenue for this county. Approximately forty-two percent come from property taxes. When we began budget presentations last year, we recommended a three-mill increase because we had been at a twelve point seven three-three mil for like seven years, and we had an increase, but our county continued to grow. And so we needed to address that growth, and there were several different projects that we wanted to get started as well. At that time, we projected that the three-mill increase would generate approximately seventeen million dollars in additional funds. The plan was to address public safety concerns, personnel, deferred maintenance, and the planned new capital projects that we wanted to get started. You may recall that this was one of the items that we presented, where we talked about we need to do this three-mill increase, and the plan was to increase the fire, millage rate, the police, recreation incorporated to balance our service districts. You'll see the sixteen point nine million or the seventeen million dollars that we had discussed, that we had projected, we hadn't recognized it yet because we receive our revenues in the November-December timeframe from property taxes. This is how we planned at that time to spend those funds. This was the breakout. At mid-year, I reported to this Board that we had in fact recognized the amount that we had discussed and projected, because our collections came in. This slide shows the projection, and then the proposed spending according to the initially discussed plan. We needed to do things for public safety, police, recreation, and we wanted to set aside funds in the general fund for our oncoming capital expenditures. And in fact, when I did a presentation, I think at mid-year, my mid-year presentation, I discussed these exact items as we allocated them. I want to walk through our forecast process itself, where we began with a review of our historical data, we identified the revenue sources by working with our tax assessor, our tax commissioner, and then throughout as we adjust our budget, we adjust for uncertainty. We try to plan for that to occur, and then we project those revenues throughout the year, we review and revise that budget, and then we incorporate that forecast, which I've presented to you in our budgeting process. I'll pause at this moment before I begin to talk about impact fees, if you have any questions, because I know that there were several questions with regard to where did we come up with this seventeen million dollars, and it was this Board's in its wisdom, because we know that we were growing, that we wanted to do the three percent millage rate increase, and then we wanted to assign that even though we didn't know at the time what our collections would be. We now know what those collections are, and they're in the bank. Before I begin with the impact fees, any questions at this time?
Okay, any questions?
Good morning, I have a question.
Good morning.
So, I know you're explaining the seventeen million, but I think I still have an unanswered question.
Yes, sir.
Last time about the eight million dollars that we were trending favorable for the year. Do I need to repeat your question, or?
No, you don't have to repeat the question.
I've asked it like three times, so.
You don't have to repeat the question. So, we're still trending, our favorability is going to be at the seventeen million dollars at this point, is what we're projecting?
I'm not talking about the seventeen million dollars.
The plan was to address public safety concerns, personnel, deferred maintenance, and the planned new capital projects that we wanted to get started. You may recall that this was one of the items that we presented, where we talked about, we need to do this three-mil increase, and the plan was to increase the fire, millage rate, the police, recreation, and incorporated to balance our service districts. You'll see the 16.9 million or the 17 million dollars that we had discussed, that we had projected, we hadn't recognized it yet because we receive our revenues in the November-December timeframe from property taxes. This is how we planned at that time to spend those funds. This was the breakout. At mid-year, I reported to this board that we had in fact recognized the amount that we had discussed and projected, because our collections came in. This slide shows the projection, and then the proposed spending according to the initially discussed plan. We needed to do things for public safety, police, recreation, and we wanted to set aside funds in the general fund for our oncoming capital expenditures. And in fact, when I did a presentation, I think at mid-year, my mid-year presentation, I discussed these exact items as we allocated them. I want to walk through our forecast process itself, where we began with a review of our historical data, we identify the revenue sources by working with our tax assessor, our tax commissioner, and then throughout as we adjust our budget, we adjust for uncertainty, we try to plan for that to occur. And then we project those revenues throughout the year, we review and revise that budget, and then we incorporate that forecast, which I've presented to you in our budgeting process. I'll pause at this moment before I begin to talk about IMPACT fees, if you have any questions, because I know that there were several questions with regard to where did we come up with this $17 million? And it was this board's in its wisdom, because we know that we were growing, that we wanted to do the three percent mil, millage rate increase, and then we wanted to assign that even though we didn't know at the time what our collections would be. We now know what those collections are, and they're in the bank. Before I begin with the IMPACT fees, any questions at this time?
Okay, any questions?
Good morning, I have a question.
Good morning.
So, I know you're explaining the seventeen million, but I think I still have an unanswered question.
Yes, sir.
Last time about the eight million dollars that we're, we were trending favorable for the year. Do I need to repeat your question, or?
No, you don't have to repeat the question.
I've asked it like three times, so.
You don't have to repeat the question. So, we're still trending, our favorability is going to be at the seventeen million dollars at this point, is what we're projecting?
I'm not talking about the seventeen million dollars, it's the eight million dollars that I've asked since December.
Yes, sir. And that's the eight million in favorability?
Is the eight million part of the seventeen?
The eight is a part, it's not a part of the seven.
It's not.
But the, the favorability that I'm talking about is the forecasted seventeen, seventeen million dollars, and I have not, Commissioner, gone back and found out the eight million dollar question.
So, can we get, when, when can we get that answered?
No, I, my, my intent is to go back and find out where I presented the Commissioner with an eight million dollar favorability, and go back to that. I think what he's referring to, but I want to confirm it, and I do want to address it, I think what he's referring to is when we were forecasting out for our fiscal year '24 number, that we talked about, we were going to have approximately seven and a half to eight million dollars in fund balance that we were going to add at that time, and then at that time, he requested that we set aside a certain amount for road resurfacing, and that's, I see you're shaking your head, so I'm saying I need to go back and find out when I made that statement about the eight million dollars. Allow me to do that.
So you stated when we had mid-year budget, and you had stated it prior, last meeting?
Yes, sir.
You stated that, because I asked you, I said, our current budget is $259.7 million, and you said?
Correct, yes, adding the seventeen, I said we'd be at two seventy, two sixty plus the seventeen is two seventy-seven.
Right, but at that time, you said, we are trending favorably at around $251 million, meaning that by the end of the year, we were looking to only spend 251 of the 259.7 million dollars. That's what you stated.
That's what I stated, and it could have been an inaccurate statement at that time, because what we're doing right now is we're trending to spend, in terms of our expenditures, 1.2 million greater.
Commissioner Lewis, I will go back and look at the presentation so that we can report back in terms of the eight million dollars. I know you've asked this at every, every budget update or financial update, so let me go back and review it, and let you know specifically what he says, so I can try to help him navigate through it.
Why do I have to keep on repeating the same question? And I ask, and now you say, well, I don't remember saying that. It's on tape.
I didn't state I didn't remember saying that, I said I will go back. Commissioner, Commissioner, there's no need to excoriate me in front of the public. What I will do?
What should I do?
Is I will, what you should do or can do at this point is allow me the opportunity to go back, find out where I stated the eight million dollars, and respond back to you in a manner that is more appropriate than this public setting.
Commissioner Lewis?
Well, I did that at first, I did that since December. I've done it for two, three months. So now I have to ask in public, and now you don't want to tell us what the answer is. So what do you expect us to do as a board?
It's not a choice of not wanting to, it's not a choice of not wanting to.
I'm still talking.
So was I.
I'm still talking. Do you expect us to repeat the same question and have the citizens sit up here and look at us and say, why do they sit here and allow this lack of information to continue? Do you expect us to do that?
Commissioner David, let me?
What I don't, what I don't expect you to do, Commissioner, is to excoriate me in public and question my credibility and reliability. I said, allow me the opportunity to find out where I mentioned the eight million dollars, and I will get back to you on that. I also offer my apology for not getting that information and finding the eight million dollars to you.
Stand back for a second, I want you to stand back for a second. Commissioner Lewis, we will provide the information to you before noon today. We will go back and revisit the video and make sure that we provide the information that you've requested.
Should I continue?
Yes, go ahead.
This slide talks about our IMPACT fees and the amount availability by district. IMPACT fees are being spent on new capital improvements or equipment. Most recently, we purchased fire apparatus, and this month reflects our park purchase in District Three. I want to talk about SPOLOST Five, where our collections revenues continue to trend higher than expected, and expenditures remain down as most resurfacing projects are just This is the financial representation of our SPOLOST collections, our expenditures, and the graphical representation of where we're trending, with the blue line being the budget, the red being revenue. Prepare to take any additional questions at this time.
Any questions on IMPACT, SPOLOST, or T-SPOLOST? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. If we get our county manager to go through our consent agenda.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, March the 11th at 9:00 a.m. Under E-911, we have a resolution authorizing a non-disclosure agreement between Henry County, Georgia, and the Georgia Emergency Communications Authority for access to detailed Department of Revenue reports. Under planning and zoning, we have a resolution approving our requests for a new streetlight district for Kendall Grove, Phase Two subdivision on Willow Lane, located in District Four. Under the Police Department, we have a resolution requesting to formally declare a surplus and authorize the donation of four police motorcycles to the Rottdale County Sheriff's Office. Under risk management, we have a resolution awarding a proposal for Fire Protection Services' annual contract to ACOM Fire Solutions as a unit price agreement with no fixed quantities for one year, with two mutually agreed upon annual renewals. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Are there any questions on the consent agenda? Any questions from the board? Here and now, can I get a motion to approve consent agenda?
Motion to approve?
Got a motion? Got a second?
Thank you.
All in favor? Motion carries. Now we move to our regular agenda. Next item on the agenda for our regular agenda is the resolution awarding bid 25-41. Lynn?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, and pillars of the Henry County community. I'm very pleased to present to you a resolution awarding bid number 25-41 to construct the Airport Runway Pavement Rehabilitation Project, approve Croy Task Order Number 20, and approve GDOT Limited Participation Contract. Henry County desires to make improvements to the Atlanta Speedway Airport as outlined in the fiscal year 2025-29 Airport Capital Improvement Plan. The Henry County Purchasing Department solicited bids to construct the Airport Runway Pavement Rehabilitation Project, and posted bid number 25-41 on the websites of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, and ACCG GLGA. There were four responsive vendors who submitted bids. CW Matthews of Marietta submitted the most responsive low bid in the amount of $2,146,100. Construction is eligible for state grant reimbursement in the amount of $1,609,575, and requires a local match in the amount of $536,525. Croy Engineering submitted Task Order Number 20 for construction administration, construction inspection, and construction testing services in the amount of $102,342.98. These engineering services are eligible for state grant reimbursement in the amount of $76,757.24, and does require a local match in the amount of $25,585.74. State grant funding is available through a limited participation GDOT contract. GDOT has committed to $3 million, and the not-to-exceed local match is in the amount of $1 million, and will be funded through the Capital Improvement Plan. The final GDOT contract will be submitted electronically for execution by the chair or county manager. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but.
Thank you for taking the lead on all this, because much needed, so thank you for that.
It is, it's very exciting. This pavement rehabilitation includes grooving of the runway. We'll be one of the only general aviation airports in this area to have a grooved runway, so that impacts our NASCAR race teams when they fly in. The aircraft that they come in on require, if it's raining or a wet runway, they require them to land on a grooved runway, so a lot of times, they'll have to go to Hartsfield because that is the closest grooved runway. So this is going to be an economic, a positive economic impact to the, to the airport. And GDOT has committed to $3 million, so the bid came in lower than expected, but they're still committing that total amount, so that amount will be able to be the difference on what's not used, we're going to be able to use on additional projects at the airport.
That's amazing, thank you so much, Lynn, for all the work that you do with our SPOLOST projects, and especially the airport, because that is an important economic engine for the county.
It absolutely is, yes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Awesome job, thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries, thank you so much, Lynn.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Sheriff's, from the Sheriff's Office Resolution approving the acceptance of State Criminal Alien Assistance Program Award.
Good morning, good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, county manager, and pillars of the community. Colonel Tina Daniel, we are asking the board to approve a SCAT grant in the amount of $40,550. This grant is administered by BJA, and SCAT, which is the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program, is in conjunction with ICE, Homeland Security. We do meet all the requirements, because we have incurred costs in reference to incarcerating undocumented criminal aliens with at least one felony or two misdemeanor convictions for the violation of state or local laws, incarcerated for at least four consecutive days during the period. These funds are needed desperately to ensure that we can continue to maintain our aging facility. We have a lot of repairs that are not, that are needed at this time, and so we are requesting the board to approve the amount of the grant in the amount, or the grant in the amount of $400, or $40,550.
Thank you, so I, I have a couple of questions with regards to, so this is being required by the Department of Justice that you all take in illegal immigrants, I'm assuming in the event that ICE makes an arrest here in the county, and you have to hold them, hold them for what period of time?
So, this is separate, we have had, we have had this grant in the past.
Okay.
I think you're referring to the bill that was passed last year, House Bill 1105, which does require us, once an illegal immigrant, someone who's not born in the United States arrives here in the United, or arrives at our facility, we have 48 hours to, give them 48 hours for them to provide us documentation that they're actually a U.S. citizen. If they do not at that time, we are required by law now to contact ICE, and we must hold them. They give us a detainer, and we have to hold them until ICE picks them up. On average, it's been about four to six days. Our numbers have, we've seen them slowly increase, we'll see what happens. We had one last year between the period of October 1st and December 31st. We've had 15 to date, just this first quarter.
Wow, that's, that's a huge increase.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
So what does that do with regards to, I know that you have your own daily population of inmates, is that putting a strain on your capacity of what you can hold?
We project that it might. At this time, we'll just have to see which way the numbers go. Our current daily average population at this time is 726 inmates. Of course, that varies and fluctuates daily. That's at an increased cost of, if the inmate is on medication, which the majority of our inmates are, a cost of $124 per day, per inmate.
Wow, okay, any other questions from the board?
No questions, other comment. I just remember having, first of all, thank you for coming, I just remember having a conversation with you earlier, and just to make the public aware of the increased medical costs that the jail is incurring, I know you explained that you have one particular inmate that the cost per month is $60,000, is that correct?
That is correct, it's costing us, this is just one inmate, $15,000 per week, just for, to ensure we provide the medical care that we are required to provide them.
Yeah, I just want to make the public aware that, you know, some of the increased costs that we have with the jail, a lot of it is due to medical issues that they, they have, so.
Yes, sir, it is.
Thank you for what you're doing, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I know that some of the legislation that we've been advocating for is that if individuals have insurance, or are either on state Medicaid or Medicare, they lose those benefits once they are, from the state side, once they are arrested, or once they are incarcerated. I know that we have been advocating for them to continue to have those benefits at least up to a conviction, and, you know, then that way, that, that would pay, help pay for a lot of the medical costs that you incur, but you guys are also dealing with a percentage of your population having a lot of mental health issues, and, and I talk about this every time that I can get before a legislator, or, you know, those individuals that are making the decisions, that jail is not the place to handle mental health crisis. We need facilities here that can handle that, and probably what, 20, 30% of your population has some type of?
Thirty-two percent currently.
Has thirty-two percent of your population has mental health?
Yes.
You know, issues or, so that in itself increases your medical cost as well, because they have to be on medication.
Yes.
And, you know, I just, just want the public that, as you listen to this, have conversations with your legislators, because they make state laws that impact us on a local level.
They do.
They, some of these laws are unfunded mandates that falls on the county to have to pick up those expenses when you're using a jail as a mental health facility. And so we will continue to fight the fight, and, but we thank you for what you all do at the Sheriff's Office, and, you know, appreciate all your hard work. So if I can get a motion to, Commissioner Robinson, that you have?
I'll give you a motion, I just want to say thank you, Tina, and hopefully the Sheriff's Department can come and present more often, because more often you're in front of us, it informs the community. I'm just so thankful that Leadership Henry is here today, so they can understand and hear as well, and they can also go back and advocate for us all, because that's the purpose of, you know, being a part of the organization, so I'm grateful that they are here. But Madam Chair, I'm motion to approve the funds for the Sheriff's Department.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Tax Commissioner, this is a public hearing, resolution of the Board of Commissioners to, this is reference to a tax, property taxes.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and Commissioners. I'm Lynn Carter, the Deputy Tax Commissioner's Office. Mr. Nigerian is here today requesting a refund in the amount of $2,061 for interest, penalties, and fees that he for interest, penalties, and fees that he paid on his delinquent 2023 and 2024 tax bills for two properties he owns in Henry County. These properties are located at 240 Henry Hampton Street and 37 Monarch Drive. Mr. Nigerian has owned properties within Henry County for over 25 years. For 22 of those years, the property tax bills have been due in mid-November. And the last 16 of those years have been due November 16th. Our records indicate that the property that he purchased for 4037 Monarch Drive, he purchased at our tax sale in 2012, making him aware that we do sell properties for delinquent taxes. The records show a mailing address for these two parcels of 30 Lindsay Drive, a property he sold in 2022 and did not update his mailing address with the Tax Assessor's Office until January of 2025. As a property owner in Henry County, it is the owner's responsibility to be aware of the due date of the tax bills and to ensure their property taxes are paid. It is also their responsibility to notify the Tax Assessor's Office of any mailing addresses for future assessments and tax bills. Any consideration of waivers will typically be for the reasonable clause of postage or clerk error. Our offices do receive requests on a daily basis and we simply explain to the residents why the interest and penalties cannot be waived. Based on the facts of this case, we believe this falls into the willful neglect and therefore recommend denial of this request.
Thank you. Is the property owner here? Okay, can you come forward, please?
Morning. Yes, she's right. We moved from McDonnell three years ago. And used to be, I put forwarding address, used to be took care of everything. Now, we didn't know you changed your policy. We had to come here and put application for changing of address for each property separately. We found out that two months ago we did that. But I've been retired 11 years. I wasn't aware of those changes. And the tax, interest, penalty, and other fees accumulated $2,061, which is to me very excessive amount of money considering we are both retirees. We've been living in McDonnell 34 years and we had many houses, like she mentioned. We never were late paying taxes. And the contrary, every time I received a bill, I paid ahead of time. Now, this time, I don't know, this is kind of removing all that stuff. I just didn't remember and we didn't get mail from you. That's the reason we didn't pay those taxes. So, we are asking you just if you can waive those charges or at least deduct it, reduce it. I mean, you charge every month interest and then you charge every quarter another interest and then $255. I think that's administrative fees. You have the numbers there?
The $250?
$255. I think that's administrative. Anyway, it's three different kinds of fees, interest fees for the same violation. I mean, it's not violation for, I don't know how you call that, for not paying taxes in time. Three different kinds of penalties and fees. To me, that's too excessive.
I just want to add that my husband is 76 years old and I'm 71. We were downsizing. It was time and we were moving closer to our grandchildren. In our age and with all that was going on, we still were checking our mail all the time. The house on Lindsay Court that was, for some reason, we never heard from new buyers. They never told us that there is a mail, but the house is on Monarch Drive and Hampton. We did it regularly. We never got any, usually we would get, you know, how he was doing all the time. But we did not get that. And like he mentioned, we did not know that we have to register it with you for each house. And we know it's our fault. We should have known. But like I said, we, too much going on in our age and it's not easy to move. I bet everybody will understand that. So, we're just asking you just go a little bit easy on us. These houses are our only income. I was self-employed for 35 years. I was here in Henry County running business, unite bridals. I bet somebody knows about that. And raising kids and everything, I was not able to contribute too much, you know, because we had to put children through the school and all that. And I just want to ask you, just go easy on us. It was not, that's our only income. I don't have much and he doesn't either. So, we really, you know.
I will state that the interest and penalties are determined by the Department of Revenue. We do not make those decisions. Those are determined by theirs. And the $255 that he's referring to are collection fees and lien fees.
My point is you charge three different kinds of penalties, interest, for the same thing. That's too much to me, don't you think?
It's determined by the Department of Revenue.
Monthly interest.
Sir, the public hearing is over. She doesn't have any say what the Department of Revenue charges. That's not her decision. Lynn, how many properties do they own or did they...
They currently own two. They did sell the third home in 2022.
Okay. And they pay taxes for, on other properties that, you said that one of the properties, they bought at a tax sale?
One of the properties in question today, he did purchase at a tax sale in 2012.
Okay, then. So, he knew that he owned the property and taxes are always due around November.
Yes, ma'am.
So, if you don't get a statement, it's your responsibility to follow up with the tax. It is your responsibility as a property owner to follow up with the Tax Commissioner's Office if you don't receive a statement.
I know that.
It is your responsibility to follow up with the...
A lot of strength. It just didn't come to my mind.
Okay.
It is our fault. We understand that, but we're just asking you go easier.
All right, then. I have a, there's a motion to deny the appeal from the request from the Tax Commissioner's Office. Can I get a motion? Okay, a second. All in favor. Motion carries. Thank you. T-SPOS Resolution for Georgia Power Utility Installation. Rocky?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Pillars of Henry County. We're here for, as you mentioned, is State Route 81. This project is a T-SPOS. T-SPOS was approved by the voters in November of 2021. State Route 81 widening Phase 1 is an approved T-SPOS project. Georgia Power will be providing the design and the installation for the lighting for the proposed roundabout that is going to be located at State Route 81 and Postmaster Drive. The cost for this work is, for Georgia Power, is $136,646. Funding is available on the T-SPOS account Phase 1. And this will be in District 1 and District 3 for State Route 81. I'll take any questions.
Any questions from the districts? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Planning and Zoning. This is a public hearing. This is a resolution to transmit the amended 2024 Capital Improvement Element Annual Update and CIE Community Work Program to the Atlanta Regional Commission for Evaluation by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. Tucson?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Pillars of Henry County Community. All right. Okay, thank you. So, yes, ma'am, we're just asking permission to transmit an amended CIE report to DCA. We amended the funding source category. I don't know if you can see that. It's on the far right. The funding source category, whereas before we also included T-SPOS and SPAS. So, to eliminate any confusion, we have gone back and just, at impact fees is the only funding source. And so, we're just asking permission to submit this to DCA for review.
Any questions from the board? This is a public hearing. Persons wishing to speak in favor of the request have a collective total of 10 minutes to address the board. Anyone here wishing, here to speak in favor? If there's anyone here wishing to speak in opposition of this request, likewise have a total of 10 minutes collectively. This concludes the public hearing. I'd like to call for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, County Manager, do you have any comments?
Yes, ma'am. I have a four updates. This morning. As a reminder, we are having our annual Soapbox Derby, which will be hosted by the Parks and Recreation Department on this Saturday. The race begins at 8:00 a.m., but we are asking that you all keep a watch on our social media page for potential weather impacts. Speaking of weather impacts, we do have our emergency alerts from our Emergency Management and Homeland Security Team. So, please, please make sure that you sign up for the new platform regroup. It is on our county website. So, if anyone is interested in signing up, getting alerts on any emergency issues that are going on in the county, please sign up for that new platform. Also, on this Saturday, Station 8, which is located on Jodico Road, will be hosting an open house that is open to the public. So, if you are in that area and want to go out and learn about what happens at our fire stations, please stop by Station 8 on Jodico Road. And then finally, North Mount Carmel Recreation Center is on track to open later this month, early April. This is a SPOS 5 project and we are very, very excited to unveil it to the public. Madam Chair, that ends my comments for this morning.
Okay, thank you. The event at Station 8, what are the times for that? Anyone from fire here that can answer that?
Madam Chair, they are checking and I will report back.
Okay, all right, great. And the North Mount Carmel Rec Center, you said in April?
So, it is my understanding early, late March, early April. We are waiting on sewer.
Okay, all right. Awesome. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the February 4th, 2025 minutes?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor. Motion carries. We're going to move into executive session. But before we move into executive session, well, let me call for the motion for us to move into executive session. Can I get a motion? Can I get a second? Got a motion and a second. All in favor. Okay. I would like for us to take a picture with Leadership Henry. Since they are here, if we could do that before we go into executive session. So, if everyone that's here from Leadership Henry would come up front here, we would love to take a picture with everyone.
And Madam Chair, while you were, you were originally ready for the picture, the event is starting at 10:30. And it's from 10:30 to 11:30 on Saturday.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. 10:30 to 11:30. Okay, great, awesome. Let's move this chair down.
Good morning.
I sent out a text, man.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh man, hey sweetie, how you doing?
It's not, it's okay. It's a good hat.
No, I don't.
Can I get a motion for us to reconvene from executive session?
Motion.
Motion to second, all in favor.
Motion, second.
All in favor. Can I get a motion to approve the county manager, county attorney's contract?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor. What was the other? Uh, HR. Okay. Okay, come forward, Holling. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, good afternoon now, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. The Henry County Human Resources Department would like to make a res- an amendment. So we need an adoption agreement for the Association County Commissioners of Georgia's Defined Benefit Plan for Henry County employees. It will be Amendment Number 11 for the adoption agreement.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
Okay, motion, second, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Stephanie, is that all of the motions I need to carry out? Okay, all right, great. Our upcoming meetings are March 18th, 2025 at 4:00 PM. Be a special, special call, BLC meeting, and then on March 18th at 6:30 is our regular scheduled BLC meeting. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for being here today.